Okay, everyone, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. It is 6 o'clock. I'm going to start with my usual announcement that if you're planning to speak on anything, on or off the agenda, if you could please fill out a speaker card so that our city clerk will know who, well, how many. It's not necessarily about who, it's about how many people want to speak on any particular item. Okay? So with that, we're going to start, I'm going to state the time at 6 o'clock, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance, followed by our invocation. All right, and Councilmember Hilton, will you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and Malcolm McPhail with the invocation.
Thank you, and once again to the city council members, thank you and mayor for the privilege of being able to take this time to encourage and pray for our city, and of course, our councilmen who are leading our city at this time. I was also reminded, this isn't on my agenda, today is the anniversary of Loma Frontera, and I remember moving to Gilroy in 1991 and seeing City Hall still propped up with boards to hold up the walls, so I thought that was an interesting Gilroy historical thought. So, my thought is this today, as I share, I always want to bring an encouraging thought to the council and to our community, and my thought is, I had this thought today when I say, "Okay, where do I stay tonight?", and I was reminded that there are about 100 verses in the New Testament Bible, the teachings of Christ and others, that state how to get along with one another, 100 times in a short, pretty short narrative, not a thick book. And I thought, what a great word for us. It somehow seems, it says things like bear with one another, encourage one another, love one another, up to 100 of those kinds of sayings. And I thought, it's amazing how a transcendent God would think that us humans would need 100 reminders to get along with each other. There's even another good one, based in this divisive nation we seem to be in right now, and it's infiltrated to churches, it's infiltrated to other organizations and communities, of course. One said, "As much as is possible, try to get along with one another." Interesting thoughts, I thought I would share that with you, and I will pray for unity in our community. Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, thank you. We do need to hear those words at times, to get along with one another, to bear with one another, to encourage one another, and ultimately, to show love to our neighbor and to one another, as we have been challenged to do in difficult times, in our nation, in our community, in our churches, in our civic groups, where it seems there's a little bit more division at this point in our history. Help us to walk in unity, and to walk in the sense that what can we do to help our fellow man, and to love our neighbor as ourselves. I thank you for each of the council members, and the mayor, and the civic leaders that are present today in uniform, and other staff members. I pray a protection around our city, keep us safe, keep us from harm, keep us from any violence, sudden violence, and guard the gates of our city, I pray, and be with our first responders, especially that at the end of the watch, they return safely home to their parents, and that the city has been protected. And we ask those things in your name, amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, before I get to roll call, I'd like to wish a very happy birthday to council members Tovar and Marks, who both have birthdays coming up this month. Happy birthday to both of you. Okay, city clerks, report on posting the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on Thursday, October 14th at 5:00 PM.
All right, and roll call.
Give me one second, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Amaderis is absent, Councilmember Braco?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Lero Munoz?
Present.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley.
Here. All right, under orders of the day, we have none, under employee introductions, we have none, under ceremonial items, we have none. All right, presentation to the council, this is item 3.1, a public comment for anything not on the agenda. Do we have speakers?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have 12 speaker cards at the moment.
Okay, I'm going to do one minute, okay?
Give me one second here. I'm ready for the first council member, I mean, first public speaker. The first one is May Valentino Pickett, followed by Renee Roca, followed by Jaclyn Castillo.
Okay, if you could please come to the front row, if your name, if you know you are speaking on this item, if you could please move up, and the names who were called, the first one, could you please approach the podium?
I thought there would be three minutes, can I absorb?
No, I can go to two, it's just that we have 12.
The law says two minutes if it's.
Yeah, I understand that, but people can continue to turn cards in.
I put a cell phone there. It's one people you have, you have to give them two minutes.
I don't have to, I, it's within.
It's your own right.
Sir, please do not talk from the audience, okay? That's not how we do this, we don't go back and forth. Let me set it at two minutes and hope that we stay under the number that we're supposed to. At the last meeting, we did not. It went over the number that it should have been for the time that we have in our norms to do. Okay?
With your permission, I think Renee would allot her time to me.
You can't do that, I'm sorry. You have two minutes, please begin.
Okay. I attended a planning commission meeting, and I was surprised at what I saw. I saw some, a person that was at this podium as the role of a parliamentarian driving the planning commission. I'll skip over some of the particulars of what I saw, and just say, as a prideful Gilroy resident, the integrity of our city is at the forefront of my mind, especially as we continue to move in the direction of adding housing. Although we have over half a million people residing here, we still have a small-town charm. For example, it's common to approach a stop sign and have the driver motion, "You go", "No, you go", or to walk into a store and they say hello when you enter. Basically, we pretty much share a common philosophy and pleasure of our traditions and character and ambiance of Gilroy. I invite any of you who you deem appropriate to sit in on some planning sessions, perhaps assign a parliamentarian to better implement the Robert rules of order within, rather than enabling the developer or whoever's, to enable them to be in central control of our town's housing decisions and topics. We offer training for this important body, and offer the panelists a voice free of counterparts' dismissiveness. Housing development is non-negotiable at this time, but sustaining what is collectively near and dear to us as Gilroy residents is paramount. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Renee Roca, followed by Jaclyn Castillo, followed by Xavier Garcia.
Good evening. Hi, I was at the same meeting that May was at, and I was also a little disappointed in how the planning commission let the developers just kind of do everything. I had moved to Gilroy in 1978, and I miss the old garlic festival, I understand that there's issues, but it was the good old days, in my opinion, and I understand that California has, is asking, you know, they, there's a certain amount of housing you guys have to supply. I just would like, as she said, to have someone take a look at the planning commission and make sure that the developers aren't leading that, that group. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Jaclyn Castillo, followed by Xavier Garcia, followed by Hazel Quintero.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Jaclyn Castillo. As you guys know, I want to let you guys know, thank you guys for all that you guys do, and I respect every single one of you guys, even though we may disagree with some things. So, last city council meeting, October 3rd, I did catch something that Fred Tovar did say. He said that all he wanted in the recall, or all he cared about in the recall, were for those two individual families, and to me, that seemed like, does he only care for those two individual families that were in violence and got shot, or does he think about all the Gilroy families that are in violence and shot? Because to me, it seems like, you know, we've been begging for a youth center and for things like this, and you guys can't advocate for that, so I just wanted to call out on that. And then also, when I went to, when I went to Target as I was leaving, there was a lady that was asking for signatures for a petition, and I went ahead and asked her what was this for. She did ask me that it was for minimum wage to raise it, and so I did go ahead and sign it, but behind that paper, I did see a recall for Rebecca. So to me, I have a question to you guys, did I recall, I mean, did I sign to recall for Rebecca? And I went ahead and asked her that, and she said, "No, no, no", that I didn't. I asked her what was her opinion on Rebecca, and she's like, "Oh, she's okay, she helps the community." So, to me, it's like, these people are petitioning to resign, make Rebecca resign, but they don't even believe that why she should resign, so are they paid? My question is, like, who's doing this to the people, you know, so that's my question. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Xavier Garcia, followed by Hazel Quintero, followed by Ramundo Amaderis.
Hi, hello. I always get kind of nervous up here, so sorry, I'm a little shaky. I'm here to talk about, I guess, the recall Rebecca Armandares committee. I was on the Gilroylife.com, like, website, and on there, I found like a couple, or like information about like the committee, and apparently, it started off with six members, and three months ago, I was, three months ago, it has like over 50, which is a pretty crazy jump. And my mother had like a run-in with one of the people that was petitioning to get Rebecca out of the city council, and I found that their way was kind of through like peer pressure, or at least that man was, he kind of like tried guilt-tripping my mother into signing it by like saying, like, "I've been out here all day, I only need a few more signatures", like, "It'd really help if you sign it." My mom said no, like multiple times, but he kept like saying, like, "I'm almost, I can go home after this." And so, of course, my mom was like, felt kind of bad, and was like going to sign it, and my mom, as she was going to sign her name, she was like, "Wait, what am I even signing?", and then it was for the Rebecca thing. And so, it was kind of weird that this guy was kind of like trying to guilt-trip her and not like telling her, like, "Yo, this is, what this is, and this is what you're signing for", and so, I want to speak a little bit on that. And I also know that one of the other speakers who will be speaking had like a negative, I guess, experience as well with some of the people who are in the recall Rebecca committee. There was somebody who was like trying to get petitions, signatures through like lies about Rebecca and stuff like that, and so, I asked, like, whoever's in that committee, I don't know if there's a couple of you out there, like, go back and check who was out there petitioning at this Walmart or at this Target, to make sure like they're doing their job right and not telling people lies, because as like a young voter, I think like, if you're going to do something, got to do it right, and not through like lies and stuff like that. And it kind of hurts me to see like my community members like lie about stuff they don't even know. Like, just get educated, that's all we need. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt just before we continue, because this period on the agenda is for items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. The recall petition and its circulation and all of that is not within the subject matter jurisdiction of this city council, okay? Next speaker.
Hazel Quintero, followed by Ramundo Amaderis, followed by Sally Amaderis.
Good afternoon, city council members and community. Since people care so much to try and recall Rebecca Armandares due to the fact that there was a shooting near her home almost a year ago, and I strongly believe that whoever is at, whoever's for that should be enforcing gun laws in our city instead of being hypocrites. It is amusing to see that people who want Rebecca to be recalled are so desperate for signatures that they went out of their way to lie about a serious and sensitive topic like enforcing gun laws for signatures.
Okay, I'm sorry, again, this is about the recall committee?
No, I didn't, I didn't mention that.
Andy, do you want to, and can you please stop talking from the audience? I'm trying to be polite about that.
Yes, we just want to remind the speakers that the actual circulating and signing petitions and so on that you're talking about are not, are not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, so I think we'd ask you to make your remarks brief on that subject, because it's, they don't relate anything to the council's doing.
It is brief, and I didn't mention the committee. So, thank you. Okay. I think that the community who wants Rebecca to be recalled should be embarrassed by their idiotic decisions and opinions, and our city council members, and especially our mayor, should overlook every single signature and actually call to make sure that they send the right petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ramundo Amaderis, followed by Sally Amaderis, followed by Delia Sandoval.
So, good evening, council members, thank you for hearing us today. I absolutely will be making comments about the petition to recall Rebecca Armandares, and share my public opinion on that as well. This is definitely the space to do that, even if you all don't have voting power over that petition. For us, it's definitely an issue that people are being deceived into signing this petition. I know that the last city council meeting, you all decided to vote in favor of requesting Rebecca resign, based on whether they go forward with the recall election, so if that is true, and if that happened, then this is also a space for us to discuss our concerns about the like implementation of the petition. So there's been multiple folks calling our offices, calling us directly, telling us that they have been duped or deceived into signing this petition. We think that that's relevant and important for you all to consider if you're going to be considering this petition to recall Rebecca, and also that you as leaders here in Gilroy should also be concerned about how this thing was implemented, and whether it was implemented properly and honestly, and we know that that is not true, so. You will continue to hear from us about this, about our concerns about this petition being deceptive and dishonest, as long as you are sitting on this council, we expect you guys, as leaders of this community, to hold those orchestrating or coordinating this petition accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sally Amaderis, followed by Delia Sandoval, followed by Marty Estrada.
Good afternoon. It is a very sad day that honesty was lost during the collection of signatures to recall Rebecca. Since the ventriloquist policy, sitting right here, by the way, couldn't collect enough Gilroy signatures for recall, they resorted to professional signature collectors who had it lying in order to meet the quota needed. For example, when asking for signatures, they will say, "When it was for rent control or to raise the minimum wage, those signatures were fraudulent, and we need to investigate and discontinue those signatures. Shame on you. Their derogatory tactic use puts you all to shame. I can almost say that all of you never voted for her in the first place, and you hate the fact that you have a Latina questioning your good old boy politics. Shame on you. Gilroy comes first, not your hidden agendas. And any of you believe that the venom you are spreading should be, should get on your knees and pray for forgiveness, which ones were outlawed back in the 18th century.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Delia Sandoval, followed by Marty Estrada, followed by Basil S. Romero Jr.
Hello, my name is Delia Sandoval, and I'm here for, because I live on the 10th Street, the Alexander Station Apartments, and I spoke about this before. I am really highly speaking about getting, we need a youth center. There's kids that are riding their bikes in the shopping center of Smart Final, and the parking lots of the apartment building, and kids are going to get hurt, because you know, our damaged people's cars, because they're not only riding bikes, but they're riding scooters, they're playing tag, and they're doing all this and that, because there is nowhere for them to go. The apartment complex is staying only 12 and under for the playground, and for the basketball court and stuff, and so they have the teenagers, basically, you just ride, right there, riding around, and all, after school, right after school, they're all over there, like, you know, and it's going to be dangerous. And so, I'm just saying, like, I would highly speak on the apartments, because they're going to, they're going to need a youth center of some sort, if not, they're drug institutions to death, you know?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Marty Estrada, Basil L. Romero Jr., followed by Oga Martinez.
Good evening, council members. It's very important that you follow your own norms that you have listed on your website, that's part of your process. You cannot deny folks speaking if it's 12 and under, you know the rules, if it's more than 20, if it's at 20, it's actually two minutes. In regards to the recall for Rebecca, I just wanted to let this council know that, that the folks that are collecting signatures for the recall were collecting them under false pretenses, and so, we're going to file with the State of California Investigative Services criminal violations of the California Elections Code, due to the fact that there were intentional misrepresentation and false statements. In regards to, Rebecca had mentioned to the city council member a couple of weeks ago about, she asked for an inventory of all youth programs. Just want to ask the city council, have you gotten to the place to share with the public about how much inventory do we have for youth programs within the city in itself? We'd like to know that, because we've been waiting for that, I don't know if it's on the agenda, but if I can get some clarity, or we can get some clarity about how many youth programs that we have, so maybe we can bolster up programs for youth in regards to the, also, the person that spoke before me about a youth center. We really do need a youth center. I know it's on the radar for you folks, but we really want to push forward in making sure that that process happens now, not later. We already waited too long. If we can get this ball-rolling started now, get it on the agenda, getting it done, and then build it, and within five years, we'll have a youth center for all youth in the city of Gilroy, all seniors for the city of Gilroy, all parties, families. We need it badly. Please consider that, and I would like to hear if anybody has a comment regarding the youth programs that we have within the city council, within your preview, how many, how much is the inventory do we have for youth programs, and what does it look like? So we can look at that and say, hey, maybe we need a request from the city council, more programs for youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Basil Romero Jr., Oga Martinez, followed by Ron Kirkish.
My name is Basil Romero, I am a longtime resident of Gilroy. I am also a member of IBW Local 332, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I'm here tonight to voice my support for Councilwoman Rebecca Armandares, and my opposition to the recall efforts by a small group of critics behind the recall campaign. Rebecca has been an unwavering champion of workers, working families, youth, Latinos, and unhoused. She is still overwhelmingly supported by the Latino community. I oppose this recall of this dishonesty and deceit tactics in gathering signatures. Rebecca is being held accountable for an incident that was not her own or her making. This small group of rivals or dishonest about criticism having to do with the incident by trying to misinform the public that this was Rebecca's party and that this was Rebecca's home, neither of which are true, neither of which are true, okay? They are also being deceptive in their petition by slandering Rebecca while trying to gather signatures, calling her a criminal, and telling the public she was the host of the party. Those of us that know and support Rebecca know the truth, and will be sure to make sure any attempt to recall her will fail. I am strongly cautioned that the city council from approving the funds for the recall election since it was misuse of public dollars to satisfy the misguided request from a small group of hateful and dishonest critics, as well as witness the last city Gilroy community meeting that Latino communities and her supporters in the local Democratic Party will turn out to make sure any recall election fails. We also want to remind the city council that the last meeting, not one of the recall supporters were concerned with either the youth who lost their lives or their families. No one did the recall supporting mention.
I'm sorry, sir. Your time is up. Thank you, though. Next speaker, please.
One last message to the recall group, you will no longer make any decision.
Sir, it's the same amount of time for everybody. Thank you. Next speaker.
Oga Martinez, followed by Ron Kirkish, followed by Tina Chavarria.
Okay, maybe we'll let Ron Kirkish go, since she's not ready. Are you ready?
I'm here to pass out that flyer that I gave her, because that's going to be part of my speech. I don't want you to see it.
I'm sorry, we don't do that. We don't pass out flyers that people bring in unless it's part of the record ahead of time.
Why do you know that?
Sorry.
I'm here to talk about the lies that's been spread about Rebecca, that I've been going out there, and people are approaching me to sign the signatures, and they're saying that she does drugs and she's a gangbanger, that's what they're saying. I don't know how these rumors started, but it's had to a start, and the reason I brought that flyer is Alex Jones, do you know who Alex Jones is? He thought he had the right to spread rumors, and the parents got together on the school and sued him for almost a million dollars, and what I learned is you cannot make up lies and spread it. You can't do that, that's against the law. So whoever started this, because when you ask the people, "Who told you this?", they can't, they won't tell you, but I got a general idea where it's coming from, all these people that want her out. You probably didn't have the, all the signatures you needed, so you thought the next best thing is we're going to make up lies and tell these people, because these people that were taking the signatures didn't even know her, but they would not tell you who told them these lies. And that's not right, what you people are doing, making up lies about her. It needs to be investigated, and it needs to, she needs to sue all the people that had anything to do with it, because that is a dumb lie, that she does drugs and she is a gangbanger, whatever they said. But these people are spreading that, and that's the way people were getting votes, by making up lies about her, and that's not right. What do you have to say about that?
It's your time.
Do you know who started all these rumors? Do you know who did it? But I'm sure some of you are involved in this, because it didn't come out of nowhere. If these people didn't even know her, how would they even know this, to make this type of statement? But they would not tell you who started it, and how would they got their information?
Okay, was your time up? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Ron Kirkish, followed by Tina Chavarria.
Good evening, mayor, council administrator, and city attorney, and audience. I have in my hand here three documents that I created. One is a document in response to the charges that, or the comments that Bill James, the chairman of the Santa Clara County Democrat Party, made when he was here. Another one is a copy of the Brown Act violation that I have given you, and I want to make sure that the audience knows I have taken that course of action too. And a third one is a message from, or a Facebook comment made by one of our candidates, Joseph Robinson, and it shows the thinking and the mind behind this person, and it's very disturbing, I believe, I think you'll see the same thing. I'm going to give this to the city clerk, then he can decide, or you can decide if you want to read it yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Tina Chavarria.
Good evening. I'm also here to speak about Rebecca. So, I get very upset, so I'm nervous. Yeah, I just think the same thing, you need to really look at what's going on, and some of you up here who insist that, you know, you support and you felt attacked about being called Latino and stuff, but you have no problem with her helping you do your own campaigns, or even speaking out for you, or supporting you in any way, and you guys are like backing the recall up, you should be ashamed. And two, if you really want to go after, you really want somebody to pay, go after those who pulled the trigger. Why aren't you looking for them? Why aren't you going after these young people who pulled the trigger? That's who to blame here, not Rebecca. She had nothing to do with it. I think if you want somebody to pay for something, go for those who pulled the trigger. Find them. Put all the money that you're going to put into this recall into finding them, and that should solve a whole lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
I have no other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. On to item four, reports of council members. Councilmember Braco. Councilmember Marks.
Yes. Gilroy Gardens has their Halloween event continuing until October 31st. Enjoy the booth, so take your children out there and have a wonderful time. Gilroy Downtown Business Association, the annual Beer Crawl was a huge event on Saturday with 500 tickets being sold, and they're anticipating selling up to 600 next year. It was very nice to see so many people attending and enjoying themselves. A lot of people got into the spirit by dressing up in costumes. The last meeting of the GDBA was at Settle Down Brewery. It was discussed at the meeting that the 22 annual events they do are going to be scaled It was discussed at the meeting that the 22 annual events they do are going to be scaled down so people have time to create more quality events. They also discussed the need for people to sponsor these events to help offset costs. These events are very important because they bring people to the downtown, which ultimately brings people into the businesses. Visit Gilroy made an offer that night to help and assist them with their upcoming events. A big thank you to the 125 volunteers from Gilroy South Valley Community Church from Gilroy who cleaned up Yubus Creek the first weekend in October, picking up 10,000 pounds of garbage. One week later, South Valley Community Church from Hollister came and cleaned the creek, taking out a new 5,000 pounds of garbage. This past week, a week and a half after the last cleanup, an additional 5,000 pounds of garbage was removed from the creek by cheer. So since October 1st, 20,000 pounds of garbage have been removed. Once the rains begin, all of this debris of garbage are going to start to be transported down Yubus Creek to Paharo out to the ocean. We really need to think of some way to get this problem solved, and hopefully the encampments can start helping us by bagging up their garbage for a safe cleanup pickup. Thank you.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. From Visit Gilroy, recently submitted ad content and materials for GMH Today Magazine Fall Issue, Food and Travel Magazine, and the 2023 California Visitor Guide. Visit Gilroy hosted a foodie influencer named Mexi Papa in late August who had over 150,000 Instagram followers in his YouTube video featuring a number of Gilroy eating establishments has already been seen by 5,700 viewers. The California Welcome Center Gilroy manager Pam Jimenez was recognized by the Board of Directors for 23 years of service in the hospitality industry. Pam retired in September 30th, 2022. The new manager of the California Welcome Center is Susan Childers. She was introduced and shared her background in the industry that led her to now serving as manager of the California Welcome Center. Executive Director Jane Howard reported that TOT collected during the month of August 2022 increased by over 20% from the prior year, same month by local hotels. Average daily rate for the month of August increased $13 over prior year, and a very important RevPAR, which is the revenue per available room, was up by over $20 compared to 2021. Hotel Lodging Properties report that hotels have experienced a very good summer with leisure travelers, wedding guest attendees, trade workers during the week contributing to the revenue increasing currently, increases currently. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors adopted the 2022-2023 Strategic Work Plan. It will guide the organization's activities to reduce dependency on fossil fuels by providing carbon-free, affordable, and reliable electricity and innovative programs for the SBCE community. The work plan identifies goals and measures as well as their five-year strategic focus, including exploring 24/7 clean energy delivery at scale, growing the customer base and offerings, accelerating the development of decarbonization strategies, providing financing solutions to increase the impact of decarbonization programs, and attracting and retaining top talent. The SBCE team is working with all member jurisdictions to develop local reach codes that promote healthier buildings while reducing emissions and construction costs. Building electrification is a statewide movement exemplified by the California Air Resources Board, which is CARB, recently vote to ban the sale of new gas water heaters and furnaces beginning in 2030. Passing reach codes today will ensure that all new buildings are better prepared for the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. No report, I just want to echo what Councilmember Marks mentioned. I want to commend the GDBA and all the volunteers. I was actually out of town on Saturday, but I flew in, and I made it back right when it started, and I want to commend you guys for a job well done. I had a chance to jump around to different businesses and to see how active people were and how excited they were about this event in downtown was a really good sight to see. So thank you all that were involved, and I look forward to next year.
Councilmember LaRomañez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next week, I will be attending the Valley Water District. I serve as Gilroy's representative on the committee or the commission for that body. As everyone knows, we're in an extended drought period right now, and people are predicting that we are looking at a La Niña winter, which usually signifies warmer temperatures and less rainfall. So we'll be discussing whether there are additional restrictions or measures that need to be taken with regard to water conservation. Additionally, I wanted to give a shout out to Chief Espinoza for his leadership for the National Night Out. That was October 4th. There you go, you can clap for that, sure. It was, it was probably the best attended National Night Out that I've been to, and I've been going to now about nine years, and it was just an incredible community event. So Chief, thank you, and then thank also as well to Deon, excuse me, Councilmember Bracco, and Mayor Blankley, who served with me on the Gilroy Youth Task Force. We made a donation to that event as well. So thank you all for that support.
All right, thank you. And that's the first item that was on my list where I reported. Cross that out. It was a wonderful National Night Out, though. Yes, wonderful. Okay, I've got several things to report. I had a lot of meetings since our last council meeting. One was with the CEO of Collaborative Impact Solutions. That's an organization that was hired, won a contract through the county, through the RFP process, to try to have a single point of service for the county, because as we all know, social services are in great need. The county is the only one that gets the funding for all of those kinds of services, and making sure that Gilroy gets our share of those services and making them accessible to our residents is the key. So the county has hired this company to try to better organize strategically how they use the funds that we, the taxpayers, provide them for this purpose. So we are on our way with helping them with that process. And then I also met with one of the founders of Dignity Moves. It's an offshoot of Life Moves. To see, I put that person in touch with the VTA real estate team to look into a possible alternative to safe parking, since we haven't really gotten anywhere. This, of course, would all come back to council if it goes anywhere, but I'm just sharing that the conversation is starting between VTA and between Dignity Moves to see if they can put some kind of temporary housing on part of the parking lot that we might have otherwise used for safe parking. And the Office of Support of Housing is responsible for the ongoing services until such time as we might finally get the transportation services that we so desperately need here in Gilroy in order to actually help traffic congestion. So moving on to Caltrain now, speaking of transit, had a meeting with Mayor, well, Mayor Rich Constantine and I, and Morgan Hill City staff and our Gilroy City staff, met with Caltrain to really try to hone in on what, what is, why do we not have the train service that we should have, particularly after Measure RR was passed? And it is just one excuse after another. I'm sorry to be reporting this kind of information, but what I can tell you is we are on it. We need a fourth train. Nothing is going to help with transportation until we get that, and to try to argue that ridership must increase first is ridiculous, because that's never going to happen without the services that are there. So that's a little bit of what I've been up to, and also on November 1st, we're going to have a visit, I'm the representative for the Sister Cities, on November 1st, we're going to have a visit from the mayor and vice mayor of Angra, which is one of the islands Terceta in the Azores. So letting people know that. Okay. Moving on to item five, which is council correspondence. We have none, future council-initiated items. Seeing none. Consent calendar. All right, is there anyone who wishes to move any, remove anything from consent? And if not, don't make a motion yet, because I got to go to public comment. Okay? Ty, do we have any speakers for anything on the consent calendar?
I believe I do, just, and it's.
For an item on the consent calendar?
Yes. Is Mr. Estrada, is this for something on that on the consent calendar?
I don't think it is. Right, you can't, I'm sorry. You'll have to ask after the meeting. Okay? So. It's, sir, you continue to speak from there. If you'd like to call me after this meeting or anything that I said, I'd be more than happy to meet with you again. Okay? Thank you. Okay, this is for the consent calendar? Do we have something for the consent calendar? I don't.
Mr. Estrada has implied that it is for the consent calendar.
Okay, so, sir, is it for item 7.1, 7.2, or 7.3?
Maybe you can help me, Mayor. I just want to clarify, you had mentioned homeless, homeless safe parking and.
I'm not going to, sir, no. I will talk to you after the meeting. If you have a question on my report, I will talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is your, is your report online? Can I look at it online, is what you said online? I'll call you then.
Okay, that would be wonderful. Thank you. All right, do we have comments on the consent calendar?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Closing public comment, is there a motion? All right? Thank, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Roll call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Armentez is absent. Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRomañez?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Item eight, 8.1, award a contract for the interim fire station modular building. Jim Wyatt will be giving us the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So, this doesn't look like it. Thank you. So I'm back again. This is now the second part to what I had asked back in July, so I'll go through that with you. The recommendation is to award a sole source contract for the interim fire station modular building to Mobile Modular in the amount of $204,908,000 to fund the construction, installation, and leasing for three years located at the corner of 10th Street and Deanza Place in the Santa Teresa Fire Response District, and to adopt a budget amendment resolution to appropriate $204,900 in the capital projects fund for the construction of the alternate site of an interim fire station. And I just want to bring you back to what I had talked about in July, where we needed to move out of the Teak Building, and the key things that were related to that is that it's inadequate for the housing of crews working 24 hours. Right now, the Santa Teresa unit is only working 12 hours, and we typically only have two people working that, that particular station. The Teak Building is inadequate because it doesn't have any showers, cooking facilities, and the sleeping quarters are inadequate for us as well. It's also a poor emergency response location. We had brought that up to you before, that where it's located in the ranch side of Christmas Hill Park, we're slowed down by the traffic that many times will park there in waiting for their children to either be dropped off or picked up at the, at the local junior high. And in addition to that, because it's used quite a bit during the summertime, we've, we've had difficulty up to two minutes just leaving the facility, so, or leaving the park itself. And then also, there's no security. So to put a fire engine there would mean that we'd risk losing equipment and the possibility of it being vandalized. So basically, what we've, what we're left with, if we stay at the Teak Building, is that we can only really house a halftime crew of two. By moving to the interim station off of 10th Street and Deanza, the facility that we're asking you to approve tonight would include showers, two showers and two bathrooms, a kitchen, sleeping quarters for each crew member, up to three, as well as an office, and a garage that houses the apparatus for 24/7 response. It's also a superior emergency response location. It's only about 50 seconds from the permanent site in Santa Teresa, and so it, although it's not in the best location, the most ideal location, as the permanent site would be, we feel that where it's at right now is adequate for our needs until the permanent station is built. And obviously, with a apparatus or a garage to house our type 1 engine, as well as a second wildland engine, plus fencing around it, it adds the security that we need. And that would allow us to eventually expand to a full, full-time crew of three for 24/7. The modular construction and three-year lease would total an amount of $204,908. The $106,000 approximately are charges for delivery and installation. The $13,000 would be the charges upon return, and then $85,000 and some change is for the leasing for three years. And I'm just, I'm just showing you the pictures of what it would look like. On the far left-hand side of your screen, the boxed green area is the footprint of where the station would be at. It's at the very end of the block on Deanza, and as, as well as the very end of the street of 10th Street. That actual site is the footing for the eventual bridge that would be built, but we're hopeful that we'll be out of there by the time the permanent fire station is built. In addition, you'll see the modular trailer. It's a double wide, and it, it's approximately 1,000 square feet. And then the, that's just a sample just below that of the garage that we would build. It would be a metal construction with two bays, one for the smaller wildland engine, the other one for the, for the larger type 1 engine. And then the far right-hand side, you see where the existing lot is. As you see there, it says into the street, and there's actually a sign just behind that that announces the eventual temporary home of the Santa Teresa interim station. And then the, as far as the bid process and the reasons for sole source, we developed the building specs with the engineering department, and it was approved by the city. These building specs were then advertised, not only in the Mercury News, but also on the city website. No bids were received during the, the open period, and so by the close of the date, one of the potential vendors, we reached out to them, while they didn't bid for the contract, and they said that they had no available double-wide trailers that would allow us to, allow them to build the custom building that we need in the timeframe that we needed it. They said that anywhere between six to nine months before they even get the trailer itself. And so the option was to either send it out for rebid or to amend or modify our requirements based on our urgent need. And I say urgent because if we, if we continue in the location over at the, at the Christmas Hill Park, we'll still be plagued by difficulties in accessing in three different directions to the, to the actual district itself and the city, and we still won't have a facility that could house up to three people 24/7. So we contacted a previous vendor that we had got a previous quote about three years ago, and at that time, the, the new trailer that they were going to build us was 375,000. Now, based on the modification, they're actually utilizing a, a, or repurposing a double-wide trailer, and they're going to match, match it to the custom requirements that we require, and it came out to 208,000. So we're actually making a savings as compared to what we originally looked at three years ago. So the projected construction timeline and public outreach, we're, we just recently submitted the PG&E application. We're looking at a three or four month, three to four month time period before they finish the project. It only would take them roughly about two weeks, but the, the wait period is probably the longest. The site construction, it's, that's going to take us one to two months once you, once we get approval. The modular trailer could take up to four months. We're told that they could have it done, assuming that there's no delays in getting the materials, probably by the end of February. So that's what we're projecting our move-in date, late February. We might have to modify that to early March, but. that to early March, but the timeframe is acceptable for what we're looking at in being able to house the crew initially right now of only two, but eventually up to three. Public outreach, we've already... There's the sign in front of you. We've already posted that sign, so the residents in the area know that it's coming. But also, in addition to that, we'll have a letter that will go out to all the neighbors in that area advising them of the station to be housed there, as well as notification to Gilroy Unified School District, and of course, we'll also do messaging on the city website, email express, Nextdoor, and social media. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you. All right, council members. If you'd like to queue up if you have any questions, please. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for this report. It's good to see sort of how you have it outlined there. In regards to the current location and where this... And you talked about a very important issue is sort of the traffic of the school, and obviously, for those that may not have seen the map, how do you visualize that sort of not happening, where sort of the traffic is going to be a little bit less compared to where you're currently at?
Right. That's actually a good question. And so since we're literally down the street from... Want to say Glenview?
Glenview.
Say Glenview?
Los Anamos.
Oh, Los Anamos, that's right. I'm sorry. Los Anamos. We've checked that time period, and where we're located, we're not going to interfere at all with the drop-off and the pickup by the parents. Where we're at right now, we're right in the pathway. We actually have, because people double-park in the fire red zone that says no parking, we have to tutor horn, lower siren, just to have the parents move out of the way. I'm not knocking them. They're trying to pick up their children in a timely manner. It's just that having it in a park and have us being recessed so far back in the park, it does... And plus, there's speed bumps to boot. It does make it pretty difficult to get out for up to two minutes.
Right. No, and thank you. And I sort of knew that, but I just wanted you to sort of share that with the public, because I think it's going to help with sort of the traffic congestion there. So, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, public comment. Do we have any?
I have no speaker cards on this item, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. Back to council. Would anyone like to make a motion? Okay, so the motion is to approve? Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Braco and seconded by Councilmember Tovar to award sole-source contract for the interim fire station. And Ty, do you want to read the rest of it?
Yes. Let me see. Interim fire station modular building to Mobile Modular in the amount of two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and eight dollars to fund construction, installation, and leasing for three years located on the corner of Tenth Street and De Anza Place in the Santa Teresa Fire Response District, and adopted budget amendment resolution to appropriate two hundred and four thousand nine hundred dollars in the capital funds, capital project fund for the construction at this alternate site of an interim fire station.
Okay, it's actually to appropriate two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and eight dollars, so just make that correction in there. Okay. And then roll call vote?
Councilmember Armand Eras is absent. Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leo Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. All right, eight point two. Award a five-year lease purchase and maintenance agreement to Sharp Business Systems, Inc. for citywide multifunction printers in the combined amount not to exceed five hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars, and Scott is going to give us that report.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Don't have a presentation for this item. Visualize the printer that's in Admin right now. That's what we're going to be replacing the printers with, hopefully. This is for a five-year lease and maintenance agreement with Sharp Business Systems for a total cost not to exceed five hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. There are two contracts. There's a separate lease and maintenance agreement. The lease is three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, and the maintenance is one hundred and seventy-six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. The lease is a fair-market lease. I do want to clarify one item in the report. The report lists that we would own the printers at the end of the lease, and that is not correct. That would be a lease to own. It's a fair-market value lease. Our previous lease was a lease to own, so that's where there was a little bit of confusion. The fair-market value lease is a cheaper monthly cost, and it also will force us to make a decision on the printers at the end of five years. The current printer fleet has exceeded its recommended lifespan, so we have issues. Sharp has issues getting parts now, so this will force us to make a more timely decision on replacement. And we did get extended life of the printers because they weren't used very much during our period away from City Hall with COVID. But in coming back and having staff here full-time now, they're definitely due to be replaced. And the five years is a typical lifespan that's recommended for these high-usage devices. So in total, with the fair-market value lease, as well as a lower cost also on the maintenance, and some additional changes we've made at the system level as far as how we're going to be printing or having staff print to the printers, which will include black-and-white printing as well as double-sided, so we'll be saving money on paper, as well as the printing costs, because the color is a higher cost per page than black-and-white. And with that, I'm available for any questions regarding the Sharp printer lease renewal.
Okay, thank you, Scott. All right, Councilmember La Romano.
Scott, thank you very much for the report. Not exactly the most exciting topic in the world, but very critical nonetheless. And I think one thing that people are going to ask when they see that the price tag for something like this, they're going to go, "Oh, my gosh, I can buy a printer for a hundred bucks over at Best Buy. Why does it cost the city so much?" What makes the printers that we use here at the city different from something they could go and just get at a lower cost?
So these are, I mean, these are business-class printers, so they're what you would find at one of like the higher-end copier printing shops, like FedEx Office Supply, or FedEx Office and Printing and Shipping Stores. They're made to do high volumes, double-sided, fifty-page per minute up to a hundred-page per minute in the case of our copy room. They can do duplex print, or they have added features like stitching and stapling, collating, which is needed more for department printing use, so that as different print jobs are coming out, they can be sorted, so that when people come in, there's not just a stack of a couple hundred sheets, and then they're trying to shuffle through and find their print jobs. Or in the case of if something was going to be printed for council, it would be collated automatically, so there would be enough copies altogether, and no one would have to assemble that. So these printers are made to do those types of activities. As well as, for us, they're made to be managed centrally. They notify Sharp when toners are getting low, so that Sharp can auto-ship toners to us. So having these types of devices provides a lot of effectiveness and efficiency for our operation in general.
And anyone who's had to deal with a PC load letter situation, we know how frustrating that can be. One last thing, you mentioned greater efficiencies and cost savings, but I don't know if you shared the exact number over the five-year term. What is that number?
So the exact number is estimated to be more than two hundred thousand dollars over five years versus what's currently budgeted.
Great. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Okay, Scott, I have a question, seeing no one else on the board. Do you know what it costs us to buy the one that we do have in Admin?
In total, that printer purchase was, gosh, with all the features, I think it was around fourteen thousand dollars for that single printer. That one would be a typical printer for about... I'm going to say we would probably purchase four more of those just for City Hall alone. Your printer will actually be upgraded once we do this lease to an even higher-volume printer, and that one's going to be moved across City Hall to our area, based on usage in the administration area. And then the copy center will have the biggest printer. Public Works and Community Development also have larger models. That would be more expensive.
Okay, so sort of to Councilmember La Romano's question, how many printers are we leasing for five years?
In total, we have... Oh, gosh. So we are refining the numbers right now, so this is not to exceed. It's going to be between thirty and forty total printers, citywide across all facilities.
So thirty to forty total printers for the three hundred and seventy-one thousand for five years, a five-year lease, and then the maintenance is not included in that? The maintenance is a separate contract for five years?
Yes.
Right? Okay, and that's how you get to the five hundred and forty-two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Oh, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, thank you for this report. When you look at this lease purchase here and with Sharp Business Systems, and help me understand, for the size of this contract here, were there other... Was this sent out for bid, or is it's... I'm trying to understand. I mean, I don't see any others.
Yes. So this is, we're actually leveraging what's called the Sourcewell Contract. That is bid through the state of Minnesota.
Okay.
It's competitively bid, so we're using a larger contract. They do typical bid procedures such as requests for proposals, public noticing, public bid openings, et cetera. So we're using that contract vehicle for this purchase to sole-source these printers, and we did do that for the previous lease as well.
Okay. And so Sharp Business Systems is also located out of San Jose, right? So it's local?
They have offices in California, yes. Our account rep actually lives here in Gilroy.
Okay, even better. Good. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Okay, motion by Councilmember La Romano, seconded by Councilmember Braco to award a lease agreement. It's not a lease purchase agreement, a lease agreement and maintenance agreement to Sharp Business Systems and authorized city administrator to execute the agreement documents. Okay, and that passes. All right.
Thank you.
Item, thank you. Item eight point three. Award of a three-year custodial services contract. You think the last one was high? Okay. To Frank and Grossman Landscape Contractors, Inc. in a not-to-exceed amount, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand eight sixty-six. And Walter, you're going to give this report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. The city's current custodial services agreement expires on October 31st, 2022. An invitation for bids was issued on September 2nd, 2022 for a three-year custodial contract for the period of November 1st, 2022 to October 31st, 2025, with an option to extend the contract for up to two years. This IFB closed on September 28th, 2022. This contract covers ten different buildings in an area approximately one hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet. Two bids were received for this project. One was from our current contractor, Frank and Grossman, based in Hayward, and the other from Central Maintenance Company, based in Gilroy. The two bids were evaluated based on cost, available staffing to service the contract, safety practices, expertise, operational plan slash quality control, and references. The evaluation team selected Frank and Grossman as the finalist. They found that Frank and Grossman have a more comprehensive cleaning schedule with more hours of cleaning service offered and at a significantly lower cost. The first-year annual cost of the proposed agreement with Frank and Grossman is three hundred and sixteen thousand and forty-six dollars. Two hundred and ninety-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-seven plus a contingency of six percent, which is seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine. This contingency will only be spent if needed for additional programs, or if additional cleanings become necessary due to COVID or other need. Years two and three, which also include a six percent contingency and an annual price increase of three percent, are three hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and twenty... three hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and three hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred... three hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars respectively. These funds are available in the fiscal year 23 budget, and will be incorporated into the fiscal year '24 and '25 budget. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. All right, council, any questions?
Mayor?
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. Thank you for this report. So I'm trying to see, and I don't know if I couldn't find it, but what is, of the two bids that we got, what's the difference in cost?
So the difference is, we had a forty-two percent... It was forty-two percent more expensive from Central Maintenance Company, the one out of Gilroy, than the one out of Hayward.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know where I was going with it, but thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then going to the public.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, no speakers on this, so closing public comment, and coming back to council. Do I have a motion, one way or the other?
So moved.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilmember Marks and seconded by Councilmember Braco.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Unfortunately, there is a problem with the system, so I'm just going to do a roll call vote on this.
Sure.
Councilmember Armand Eras is absent. Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hillary Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Leo Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, public hearings. Okay, we start with nine point one. Actually, it's only one under public hearings. Review of the draft housing element, and Cindy is the lucky person to give this report.
Good evening, everyone. I'd first like to thank our consultant for preparing the draft housing element, and to all the many members of the public who have attended meetings and provided comments and recommendations on the draft housing element. I plan to give a quick overview this evening, providing you with plenty of time to ask questions, and it also allows the public to make comments. The draft housing element consists of an introductory chapter, followed by the five chapters shown in this slide, along with appendices for the site's inventory and outreach effort. The draft housing element contains seven overarching goals, which help inform the policies and programs: housing production, constraints, housing preservation and rehabilitation, housing assistance, housing needs, fair housing, education, and outreach. The draft housing element also contains forty-nine programs categorized by each overarching goal. The programs are listed here should we need to refer back to any of them. Next, I want to talk about where we are today and where we intend to go. To date, we have held a number of community meetings, both online and in-person, including tonight's meeting and this coming Thursday's Planning Commission meeting. We've also maintained an up-to-date website with our online survey, frequently asked questions, a list of upcoming meetings, video recordings of past meetings, and a copy of our current draft. We've received comment letters from seven individuals, six organizations, and a coalition of South County community leaders who met several times to discuss housing element recommendations for Gilroy. The majority of the comments and recommendations were in regard to our site's inventory and our programs. However, there were also comments about affirmatively furthering fair housing and community engagement. And a quick note on community engagement, although we are at the end of our comment period, we do continue to encourage the public to reach out to us, and we as staff continue to engage with our community, residents, workforce, and local stakeholders. There are many comments and recommendations that I could have highlighted for you, but I'm going to focus on the site's inventory and programs. We acknowledge that there is some confusion in how we identify the pending sites and the proposed sites. In the second draft, we will provide a status on each pending project to indicate where they are in the pipeline, and remove any project that received a certificate of occupancy on or before June 30th, 2022. We will also identify vacant parcels by their APN, not by their adjacent address. In regard to the sites, some of the recommendations we received were increasing lower-income sites in the higher resources area of the city, primarily on the west side, providing more evidence such as interest letters, conversations, or emails from owners and builders of prospective projects, and doing a better job of tying our needs, findings to the sites that we selected. With regard to programs, we received recommendations to enhance our ADU programs by increasing allowable... by increasing allowable floor area and allowing second stories. So, for example, we could possibly do this in exchange for an owner deed restriction for the to make the ADU affordable. Respondents also wanted more details regarding the specific types of anti-displacement policies we would adopt. Some encouraged us to strengthen our programs for streamlining our governmental processes that act as a constraint to development. Others encouraged us to strengthen our engagement and educational efforts. Some of our stakeholders provided potential grant resources for place-based improvements downtown. Now that, as I mentioned, the official comment period has ended, we will revise our draft to fix known errors, update the site's inventory, as I previously mentioned, take another look at how we can enhance our programs, and continue to engage our community. Sharon and I are also working on a farmworker outreach event, and we will also be meeting one-on-one with several local stakeholders, including Silicon Valley at Home. We will submit a revised draft to HCD for their ninety-day review period and then return to the council with a third draft that addresses HCD comments. During our meeting today with SV at Home, we were reminded that all cities are receiving these comment letters, and we can continue to work towards certification during their ninety-day review period with HCD. We will keep the city administrator and the city council apprised of the timeline and next steps over the coming months. This concludes my presentation. I have Dan Wery here from Michael Baker International. Sharon and I are also available for questions.
All right. Thank you, Cindy. Okay. Councilmembers, if you have questions, would you? Oh, does the board not work? For Councilmember question?
No, it actually works. It just wasn't working for that particular area.
Okay, very good. So if you have any questions, could you please line up on the board? Otherwise, I'm going to go to public comment. Okay. I'm going to public comment. Oh, this is a, yeah. It's a, sorry.
And Madam Mayor, would you mind asking for experte communications?
I was told it's not necessary.
Oh, not necessary, okay.
It's not necessary for this item.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm opening the public hearing at seven twelve P M. Do we have any comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Oh. Closing at seven twelve P M. Okay. So possible action is to accept the report and provide direction to staff. Are we providing direction or letting staff continue as as they've been? Is that the direction? All right. Wow, that was a lot easier than I thought it would be. Okay. We good? Thank you, Cindy. All right. Under item ten, unfinished business, we have none. Item eleven, introduction of new business. Okay. The Gilroy Downtown Ad-Hoc Committee Final Report and Adoption of Committee Recommendations. Bryce will be giving us the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. So again, this is a presentation on the final report of the Downtown Ad-Hoc Committee as well as the final recommendations for council consideration of approval. So a little bit of background information. The committee was formed on November first, two thousand twenty-one by Action City Council. Three council members were selected. Councilmember Tovar, who serves as the chair, Councilmember Marks, who serves as vice chair, and Councilmember Armandares. The committee was formed to identify challenges and opportunities to spur downtown revitalization. The committee developed four recommendations initially, which council approved at their July fifth meeting. However, recently, the committee has developed an additional five recommendations that are being presented to you tonight. So on this screen are the nine recommendations. The first four, again, already approved by council on July fifth. And the recommendations five through nine are new recommendations being proposed to council this evening. So the first recommendation that was approved was the update to the downtown strategic plan. The strategic plan obviously is a visioning document recommending economic development strategies to attract businesses to selected districts within the specific plan area. Many of those strategies remain available, but conditions have changed since adoption of two thousand and six. So this recommendation is to update that plan. And this is identified, will likely be identified in the fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five recommended budget and department work plans. The second item, the second recommendation is develop new ordinances to address vacancies and noise. Vacant buildings are an ISO and a challenge towards revitalization efforts. And so the committee is recommending a policy ordinance to incentivize the leasing of vacant buildings. The recommendation included assessing a looking at assessing a vacancy tax. This would require a ballot measure, of course, to to be put into effect. Another policy was the noise ordinance, which may be needed as evening and nighttime economy develops in the downtown. The third recommendation approved by council was to pursue opportunities for an assessment district. These are used in other downtowns to fund infrastructure and beautification improvements to enhance downtown areas. This recommendation was approved in council by council in July, and staff has commenced contracting with a consultant firm to do a feasibility study on this. The kickoff meeting was held with consultants in early October, and we are working on preparing boundary designs. And they will then subsequently conduct outreach to businesses to assess their interest in pursuing that district. The fourth one and the last one that was already approved by council is develop a downtown parking management plan. The downtown parking management plan was a legislative agenda item of the council as well as a recommendation of downtown ad hoc committee. Work has commenced on this recommendation. Contract is awarded by council for W Trans in September twenty-twenty-two, and this work will continue into twenty-twenty-three. The second recommendation on this slide is also the first of the new recommendations from the committee, which is implement a facade and painting improvements and plywood blight removal program. As council, no poor building conditions and blight are a detriment to having an attractive inviting downtown and can be a hurdle to making a downtown vibrant. To address this, the committee is recommending the development of a new round of facade and painting improvement programs, but also include blight and plywood removal as part of that. The committee is recommending a hundred thousand dollars in total appropriation for this program, which would if the recommendation is approved, would come back to council for approval at a subsequent meeting. The program is proposed to reimburse about fifty percent, up to two thousand five hundred dollars for facade and painting improvements or up to five thousand dollars for plywood and blight removal, respectively. Again, the guidelines, qualifications, amounts, and program details will be approved by council at a future meeting. The third item on this slide is to create a downtown building and planning fee reduction program. The program is recommended to last about twenty-four months and reimburse up to fifty percent of permit fees paid after project completion and finalization of permits. The project would be required to remain active without requiring a permit extension, which would disqualify it from reimbursement. A cap is also being proposed at five thousand dollars. Other considerations, including the building level in the downtown area to determine the timing of implementing this program, would also be brought back to council for consideration. These are the last three of the new recommendations. The first is establishing a downtown pop-up park. The committee is recommending this pop-up park, which is essentially a park with attractions that are portable and have programming and amenities to draw interest into downtown. It is proposed to be located in a grassy lot north of the Gilroy Art Center. And again, this is a downtown traction to encourage downtown visits where programming and items can change, also to help reattract interest in the park as time goes on. Second, recommendations develop beautification and decorative lighting improvements. These are smaller-cost projects to enhance attractiveness of downtown, included with the action is a proposed budget amendment to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance, so that any decorative or aesthetic decorative lighting or aesthetics that may be beneficial for the holiday season can be implemented. And finally, the committee is recommending to introduce season initiatives to to the downtown business and property owners through a kickoff meeting called Downtown Jump Start. The event is currently being planned for October twenty-seventh from six to eight P M, held at the Gilroy Center for the Arts, and would include presentation on the recommendations that are approved by council at this evening. So this has been the final report of the ad hoc committee meeting and the recommendations that the committee has developed. The recommended actions tonight include receiving the final report, adopting the final downtown ad hoc committee recommendations, and also adopting resolutions to the council to amend the fiscal year twenty-three operating budget to include the hundred thousand dollars for downtown beautification lighting. That completes the presentation. Happy to address any questions or comments.
All right. Thank you, Bryce. Okay. Councilmember La Romanos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Bryce, thank you for the report. Also, thanks to the members who served on the ad hoc committee. Very important topic for us here. Bryce, two questions for you. First, with regard to the downtown attraction that was back a couple of slides there, what kind of? What is? What would be some examples of that? I'm having a hard time trying to wrap my mind around that.
Yeah. So some of the ideas that have been considered include a, it's like a human-sized play future, so like Connect Four, Kit-Tack-Toe. You might have some displays. One was a stage that we're looking at, a small performance stage off to the side. Some of the other ideas include a essentially a program, like a scavenger hunt throughout the downtown. Approach businesses, see if they'd be interested in participating. Maybe it's a small discount local business if they visit so many sites. There's a few ideas that are back and forth.
Okay. Yeah, that gives me a much better sense of it.
Could I? Could I jump in and add?
Yeah, please.
So so this idea came about when Jimmy and I and others went to Morgan Hill and I was talking with the assistant city manager and sort of seeing how beneficial the pop-up parks were. So this is sort of where I came up with it and with with the other ad hoc committee members. We talked about this quite a bit, and Bryce is absolutely right. I mean, it's a way to generate more folks, more families downtown. And he said, obviously, as he mentioned, you know, have some games out there, a piano, a QR code, and tell you where all the different businesses are. So really going to attract more families downtown. So it would be a pop-up park that, obviously, if things change, we can always adjust. If someone decides to buy the property, then obviously, it's again, you know, it's something that we can always play with. So it's not something that will be there forever. It's something that would allow us to sort of, you know, mix it up during whatever, you know, every year. So that's where that came from. So I think the feedback I got from Morgan Hill was that it was something that was very beneficial and brought a lot of families downtown.
Yeah. No, I like the idea. That's great. Bryce, the second question was with regard to a possible noise ordinance. Maybe you can help me here. So who would be protected from noise made by whom? Who's making the noise and who's being protected from the noise?
So the the the. So the approach would be, obviously, primary residence residential impact from noise in the downtown area. Again, it's it's looking to keep that balance as you have, you know, residents in the downtown, also surrounding areas around the downtown and that basically the interchange between those two areas and how one can affect the other and balancing that out.
Okay. All right. Well, maybe that's almost a good sign where if we need a noise ordinance, it means there are enough people downtown to warrant a noise ordinance. So, okay. Cool. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Bryce, for the presentation, and thank you to the ad hoc committee. You guys came up with some awesome recommendations, and I appreciate all that hard work. And I support all of them. I want to throw on the table, though, about the pop-up park, that one of the things that can be done is is to utilize the Measure B Education Encouragement funding that we have to entice people for bike, walk, transit, to bring people to that pop-up park. It could be thirty days of pump track. So like if you go to Sea Otter, Classic, or other places, they have, you know, like BMX jumps and and, you know, things like that where they could bring it for thirty days. So and I think that there's probably a way where you can mold that by using that funding without dipping into the general fund, but using the Measure B funding to entice people and just have something different down there, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes. Thank you for the report, Bryce. Myself and Councilmember Marks had a town hall last week. And one of the things that came up was the lighting in the downtown. There seems to be a lot of lights that are burned out, and nobody's replacing them. One fixture is totally missing, I guess, on Sixth Street. So is this something that we can get on? And and one of the things I I noticed downtown, and it makes it dark, is the trees haven't been trimmed in years, and the light poles are up inside the trees, so the trees are blocking the light. So if we can look at that? Thank you.
Yes. And to answer your question, Mr. Bracco, I've asked the public works director to reach out to our lighting consultant or our lighting contractor. They're going to do an audit of Fourth Street to Seventh Street of every light bulb and just see what's broken and what's not. And then how do we we get them all up? Because I have heard that from not only you and Ms. Marks, I've also heard from some businesses about getting their lights replaced.
It might be a good time to look at replacing them with LED lights. Save us money, and they're brighter.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Tovar, did you have a?
I'll wait. I'll wait. Oh, yeah, I'll wait.
Go ahead.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Again, thank you, Bryce, for this report. In regards to one of the other items on there, the a hundred thousand dollars. So if many of you have been to downtown Long Beach or San Diego, they have lights all across. And talking with several of the business owners downtown and obviously with my ad hoc committee members, you know, we we propose that we do this because, again, I think lighting up our downtown just brings a different element, you know? And and I think, you know, you hear a hundred thousand dollars, but I think the benefit of brightening up our downtown, you know, all night long, it just is going to bring a different feel. And when I was at the Beer Crawl, just talking with business owners, they're actually looking forward to if it, obviously, if it passes. But I think it would just add a different element to our downtown. So I think that's why this is coming up, because, you know, Councilmember Bracco was right, it is dark. But with this improvement, I think it will enhance the lighting, but also attract more people downtown at night.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Marks?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I want to just expand a little bit on the noise ordinance for the public. We were concerned that all of the restaurants who have music until eleven were going to be told to shut down earlier because of all the apartments that were coming in downtown. And so, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bryce, but I think that like Tempo and the other restaurants and breweries will be protected by this and not have to be forced to close down earlier because the people moving in downtown should know that music is there and they know what they're moving into. So no way do I want to or for us to infringe on any of the businesses. Also, the vacant buildings. We're really hoping very hard that the building owners that have the vacant buildings will go ahead and take advantage of the facade grants and also the reduced fees because some of our buildings have been empty for about eighteen years now, and that's just unacceptable. We're going to get our downtown jump started, and we talked long and hard about this. And I was one of the ones that was ready to put an assessment on buildings that were empty past two years because it's almost like we have, what what are we going to do to get them jump-started and moving? Because all of our businesses need help in getting people down there. So if if all of our enticements do not help, I think the future council needs to look at another ad hoc committee of coming up with something else to get everything moving. All right. Thank you.
Okay. I have my own comments. They're not really questions because I already asked these questions of Bryce earlier and got email responses, so I just want to share them. All of these things are wonderful ideas. I intend to certainly support that we look further into all of them. But I, too, had questions about more more specifics, and they just aren't there because we need to first decide that these are all something we want staff to come back to us with. In fact, the only thing really on our agenda tonight to actually pass is the resolution for the hundred thousand dollars for lighting. So I do, I want to call out a couple of things. Number one, my big question in in all nine was, what's the geographic area? Define it for me. It's not defined yet. It's not. That's what staff, not even our our specific plan, the one that we have, specifically defined. So whether this is First to Tenth Railroad to Gourmet Alley, we don't know. So we will need to be deciding what is the geographical boundary of each of these things when it comes back? Buildings within what area for each for each of these points? The hundred thousand dollars that we are looking to possibly approve in the resolution tonight is for the lighting. It is coincidentally the same number that's in item five, which is the facade painting improvements and plywood blight removal program. So I want to point out, those are not the same thing. The one is the hundred thousand dollars for the lighting. The hundred thousand dollars here in item five is in fees that the city would not be collecting if that comes back for us to, if 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 when it comes back from staff, we decide to, whatever it is we decide to do. Just want to clarify that for everybody. And then also not clear yet is who are these programs being made available to when it comes to facade improvements or when it comes to permit fees? Is it the business owner tenant? Is it the building owner landlord? So my understanding is, whatever we do tonight, those questions, it's okay for those questions to be open because we're just directing staff to come back with more specifics, correct? Okay. Correct. All right. Councilmember Marks, you have another question?
Yes, Bryce. No, no, I do. It's not really a question. It's it's a statement. Bryce, clarify this for us, please. Bryce, clarify this for us, please. And, and Councilmember Tovar, it's not $100,000 for lighting, correct? It's $100,000 that goes for lighting and also, let me say there was-
Downtown beautification and lighting, sorry.
Downtown beautification, right. Okay, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
I should have said, sorry.
No, it was, it was I, I said just lighting, but it's downtown beautification and lighting.
Right.
Okay, so no other questions from council then? I'd like to go to the public and see if we have any speaker cards.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have two speaker cards. First one is Ron Kirkish, followed by John Taft.
Okay.
I noticed, excuse me, Mayor, my name is Ron Kirkish. I noticed that none of you brought up, other than the presenter, the issue of the tax for vacancy tax. What are we doing? What are we doing to these people? These people have invested into our city. They've invested a lot of time and money, and now we want to penalize them for issues of, we got to get them to fill their buildings. We can't wait a minute longer. We have to tax them till they do what we want them to do with their own property. We tried that, didn't we? Several years ago, I believe Al Penaro was the governor, or was the mayor then. And we said, we're going to penalize businesses that don't hurry up and fix their earthquake problems, and we're going to fine the heck out of them until they do. We're going to push them and push them, and what'd they do? They didn't do it. And so the fines got so heavy, finally they said, well, either they're going to give us the keys, or we're going to drop the fines, and we dropped the fines, if I recall right. Let's knock off this stuff about hurting the businesses downtown, the owners downtown. That's just nonsense. Thank you.
All right, next speaker?
John Taft.
Well, I also want to thank the committee for their report tonight, and what I wanted to explain to them and to everyone else is that I understand there's an implementation plan meeting later this month, and I think in a program like this, it's the implementation that counts and what is critical. And so we're going to reserve our, as a GDPA, we're going to reserve our comments till that meeting there because then we'll have the whole picture and can better understand what the, how they're planning to do it. It's getting it done that counts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor, can I just make-
Yeah, no, it's still time, council can still have deliberate.
I just want to thank Councilmember Marks and Armadere's for the time spent, obviously staff, Bryce, Jimmy, thank you for all the time that you guys put into this as well, and obviously the rest of the city staff, and, you know, Carol, Rebecca and I, we butted heads quite a bit over the last year, but I think we, we all have the same common goals here, and I want to thank you all for your hard work and for coming together and sort of, you know, coming up with a plan. I appreciate the work you guys did. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And again, each of the, each of these things is something that, right, staff would come back with there. It's just a, a collection of all of the ideas, right, that came out of the ad hoc committee, not necessarily saying any one of them is going to be implemented. I know that when it comes to a vacancy tax, that was contemplated for buildings that have been vacant for over 10 years, not ones wanting to wait a minute, right? And that would have to go to the ballot. So that's not a council decision anyway. That's something the voters would have to decide. Okay, so does somebody want to, want to make a comment?
I recommend, excuse me, assuming the council intends to approve this, the motion would be, A and B could be on one motion. I'd like to see the resolution on a separate motion.
Very good. Okay, so do I have a motion for A and B, which is to receive the report and adopt the final recommendations?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Marks and seconded by Councilmember LaRoma Yost. Digital voting allowed?
Okay.
Or not?
Yep.
Okay. And that's on the board for everyone. I haven't been saying unanimous because we're missing one, so it's unanimous, but for the one we're missing. Okay, and then I need a motion from somebody for Item C.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Marks and seconded by Councilmember Tovar, Tovar to adopt a resolution of the city council, City of Gilroy amending the fiscal year 2023 operating budget for downtown beautification and lighting by $100,000.
Councilmember Armadere's is absent. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoma Yost?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blingley.
Yes. Okay, that's also unanimous, minus one absent. All right, 11.2. Well, thank you all. That was a lot of work. Thank you to that ad hoc committee. Everybody's already said it, but, okay, 11.2. Agreement with CSG Consultants, Inc. for Plan Check and Inspection Services for the Frontier Fiber Optic Project in the amount of $419,765. Daryl, you are on.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Tonight I've got an oral report for you here. We're going to discuss the agreement with CSG Consultants for Plan Check and Inspection Services for Frontier Fiber Optic Projects in the amount of $419,000. Little background here, we've been meeting with Frontier multiple times over the last several months. They've come in and talked to us about their project, about their scope, what they want to accomplish in town. They basically want to blast fiber throughout our entire community, expand it as best they can with their network. We're looking at the potential of servicing additional 9,000 addresses within city limits with this project. 600,000 lineal feet, which is 114 miles of fiber optics installed, that's conduit and pulling the cable itself. So it breaks down to about 50,000 individual projects, 57 miles of new underground conduit installation, 43 small hub cabinets, 2,400 flush-grade handholds throughout the community. So it's a, it's a pretty vast project from what we've seen in the past. In light of this project, obviously our Public Works CIP team of three or four people cannot handle that large of a project in a short period of time, so that we don't have the sufficient staffing to plan or view the project, provide construction inspection for this magnitude of work. Staff recommends contracting with CSG, who has these abilities and services to provide the city and complement our, our small team. CSG, through the city, approved RFP processes, already providing these services to our development team, in our engineering department as well. The funding source for this would be entirely on Frontier. They'd be paying the whole way for all of the inspection services through this contractor. They'd also be paying a 15% fee on top of that for our coordination with all of our departments from finance, engineering, administration, per our city agreement. The estimated cost of the plan for construction that we have received from them is $419,765. The staff wishes to contract with CSG Services for this amount. Again, Frontier will be paying for these services through the city. No city funds expended, as discussed. The city will be charging Frontier a 50% overhead charge for CSG's work based on the city council-approved fee schedule. Staff recommends tonight to award a contract to CSG Consultants for this $419,765 to provide plan checking, inspection services for Frontier's fiber optic project. They'll basically be in the field for us. We only have one inspector right now who could help with that, so they'll provide inspection services and a team of plan checkers at their vicinity to be checking this and turning these around quickly, as quickly as possible, and keep the project moving along and stay on top of our streets. I know we've had a lot of projects in town lately with people all over the place, some contractors good, some not so good. We need more eyes on them, to be honest with you, to keep them honest and keep them in those positions where they said they're supposed to be encroaching and not where they're not supposed to be encroaching, and this would help us do that at their expense and not at the city's expense. So I'm here with any questions you might have tonight.
All right. Council, please line up if you have questions. Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you clarify that last part you just said? Eyes on this, who, who are you, who are you relying on? You relying on citizens to report that? Or are you relying on these consultants to go out and make sure they're really where they're supposed to be?
The consultants will provide inspectors for us, as well as our inspectors. So additional inspection crews will be in the field reporting to us on where they're at, progress, timelines, schedules, and any encroachment fractions that we can go out and enforce if we need to.
So if citizens still need to report, they can still do that?
Absolutely.
Through regular channels?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, my question is a little bit along the same lines. Is that, with this consultant, is it, is this consultant contractually obligated to let us know if, if they need to dig a street, that the street is put back in the condition that it was before they started digging?
Are they contractually obligated? That's part of their scope, that, yes, they would be reporting to us to any effect of that for our streets. And we're trying to be more proactive on any type of fixes that they do in the streets. If there are a lot of cuts in the street, we're looking at actually resurfaced streets rather than just patching streets. So we're going to be on top of these guys to make sure they do more than less with this project.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm getting at, is just to make sure that we are addressing these things in the contracts.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And so this is in the contract?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just have, I have a follow-up on that, too.
Yep.
So you, you had mentioned of that, you know, if they've made so many cuts that you'll require them to put the street back normal, but I, if I remember right, isn't there like a five-year, like if they, there's a five-year mark, but what happens if they stretch their work out over an extra year to get it beyond that five years so they don't have to repave it?
Right, there is a moratorium that I think you're alluding to, that if they cut into a street that's already been resurfaced within five years, they have to fix the whole street.
Yeah.
We're going to try to go above and beyond that. Other cities are already doing that with large projects, so we're going to ask them if they want these expedited, they're going to have to expedite reparations for us, too, on our streets as well, so. And at this point, Frontier's had no issues or pushback on that. We've told them upfront that they're going to have to do much more than they've done in the past to fix the streets that they dig into, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so no other council member questions? I'll go to the public. Do we have any speakers?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, no public comments, so it's back to council. We're looking to award this contract for Plan Check and Inspection Services. It's not actually the contract for the Frontier, it's the, yeah. Anybody want to make a motion? Okay, motion made by Councilmember Bracco to award the contract, and seconded by Councilmember Tovar. Digital voting. Unanimous, minus one absent. Okay, 11.3. Third Amendment to the Agreement for Services with CSG Consultants to Extend On-Call Engineering Plan Review, Land Surveying Services, and Inclusion of Inspection Services through June 30th, 2024, and Increase Existing Agreement by $280,000. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Currently, the city contracts with CSG for Plan Review and Land Surveying Services to date. In August of 2020, CSG was awarded a contract through the RFP process for services in the amount of $175,000. Since then, there have been two additional amendments. Amendment number one, on April 20th of 2021, extended their contract to June 30th of 2022. The second amendment, on April 18th of 2022, extended their contract to June 30th of 2023. The proposed contract amendment tonight would extend the contract term to June 30th, 2024. In addition to that, we're looking for an increase to the contract by $100,000 for fiscal year 2023 for services, with an increase of contract by $180,000 for fiscal year 2024, and also add inspection services to the current contract that it does not have. The revised contract amount would total $455,000. The funding source for this amendment will be from the Engineering Operations Budget. There are sufficient funds and budgetary appropriations to account for the fiscal year 23 increases. Appropriations for the fiscal year 24 would be budgeted and recommended in the next biennial Staff recommends to approve an amendment with CSG Consultants Incorporated to increase funding by $280,000 and extend the term of the existing agreement for engineering plans review and land surveying services, add inspection services, and authorize the city administrator to execute the amendment and related documents.
All right, thank you. All right, council members, any questions? Do we have any public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, no public comments. Do we have a motion? To approve or to award? Okay, motion made by, actually, it is to approve. Motion made by Councilmember Bracco, seconded by Councilmember LaRoma Yost. Oh, did you have a question? Oh, no. You were just, okay. All right. Go ahead and vote, and that is unanimous, minus one absent. All right.
Thank you, council.
Moving on to Item 12. Thank you, Daryl. City administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just a real quick report here on the, the City of Gilroy, along with the City of Morgan Hill, recently hosted a California Housing Finance Agency workshop concerning accessory dwelling units. It was a grant webinar that was held September 29th. It gave information concerning how applicants can get ADU building permits and provided information for grant programs and other ways to make it easier for prospective ADU builders to maneuver through the process. There were 126 people registered for the webinar, of which about 75 attended, and so really appreciate staff working with our partners up north to hold that kind of program. It certainly shows Gilroy's commitment to helping those who want to build ADUs in our community work through the process. And in the second part of my report, I do want to mimic what other council members said. I did attend the Beer Crawl. I had a great time, but not too much fun, and it was really nice to see all those people downtown. It was a very good event, and I want to thank the GDPA as well for making sure I knew when it was and what time I was there. So, thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay. City attorneys' reports.
Yes, I was going to bring to your attention a very, a brand-new case on the power of LAFCO. There are very few cases that deal with the powers of LAFCO. Now, we've had run-ins in Gilroy with LAFCO from time to time. This case arose in San Joaquin County, in the city of Tracy, and, excuse me, there was a fire, there's a fire district, Tracy Rural County Fire District, which provided fire service to unincorporated Tracy. And then when lands were annexed, sometimes that fire service would be transferred to the city of Tracy, but not always. They had a kind of cooperative arrangement. So the LAFCO decided that, in their view, they would not accept any annexation petitions unless the petition also asked to de-anex from that fire district and go into Tracy for the fire district. It's called a detachment, but it's a disannexation, in effect. And the, the city and the fire district sued the LAFCO and said, you don't have the ability to do this. That's not fair, because in essence, you're originating a de-annexation, and you don't have the power to do that on your own initiative. Now, that's not entirely clear, and the LAFCO said, well, that's just the policy that we've, we've established here of how we think orderly growth ought to occur, but the LAFCO is not supposed to be a land use planning agency.